They don't have a question.
So far?
Goodbye, guys. They're doing well enough after they get it.
Okay, we're gonna kick us off in a couple minutes. Thank you for joining us, everyone.
I mean, are you guys like meeting here?
Alrighty, alrighty, alrighty. We're gonna start our meeting. Sorry, we're about 10 minutes late. Okay, welcome everyone to Santa Fel City Schools Board of Education meeting on September 23rd, 2025. I, bienvenidos a todos esta noche si quieren que hablar en español por favor levanten la mano y venimos este para que tengan traducción. Also, if you have, if you'd like to speak up during unagendized items, please fill out this blue form. You will have two minutes to speak during that time. And with that, I would like to ask someone to do the pledge of allegiance. Oh wait, there's nothing to report on closed session, so we are ready to do the pledge of allegiance. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I don't know.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will get you there. No problem. Thank you for your honesty. Okay, I just wanted to remind, there was no announcements that are reportable during closed session, and I would like an approval of the agenda by my peers.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Agenda approved by trustee Deniava Marsh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we have an agenda. All right, to kick us off, we have a new student board member representing Madrona High School. Can you please come up here, please? Okay, Andrew. Is it Andrew Contreras?
Yes.
All right, so Andrew Contreras Cornet?
Cornet.
Cornet, thank you so much. So basically, what's gonna happen is we are going to swear you in, and then you just gotta raise your hand and say that you fully agree, and then you can take your seat and join us, okay? All right. All right, Madrona High School student Andrew Contreras Cornet, do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? You take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, thank you for joining us, Andrew, or trustee Cornet. Okay, with that, we are going to move to announcements, and with that, I am actually gonna just share how we're gonna start, because I know students have homework, and then we're gonna go with our union partner. So I'm going to go to updates from our student trustees. Trustees Deniava.
Hi, everybody. We're having a great evening. Our first update for tonight is homecoming festivities have started this week. This year's homecoming theme is "There's No Place Like Homecoming", so Wizard of Oz theme. And ASB has planned a lot of fun things for this year's homecoming. We kicked off this week by having a hallway decorating competition. And then this entire week, we had dress-up spirit days every day, along with homecoming court activities during break. And then on Friday, we have our homecoming rally. And then on Saturday, we have our homecoming parade at 11:00, our homecoming football game at 12:00, at 2:00, and our dance at 7:00. My next update is college application season is in full swing. The College and Career Center has been offering many targeted workshops in order to support our students who are now applying to colleges. And, okay, and my next update is RIN Science Seminars have also started this week. Throughout the year, there are extracurricular lectures held by specialists in science, engineering, and math. The seminars are on Wednesdays, and this week's seminar is titled "The Biology of Consciousness: An Anesthesiologist Explores the Circuits Behind Our Mental States", so that's gonna be pretty cool. And then finally, as a follow-up to my last report, last year, Terlinda registered and pre-registered 374 juniors and seniors in honor of National Voter Registration Day. AP Government Teachers recently has students confirm their registration status online due to 84 additional voter registrations. That brings TOs total to 458 registered student voters.
Amazing, thank you, trustee. Let's get those voters out there. Okay, trustee Camacho.
Hello, thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who had played a part in supporting our community, specifically those individuals who supported the gates. The gates have, are encouraging students to stay on campus and making us feel all more connected with one another. For example, just last week, we saw a massive gathering for the homecoming reveal. This week, our homecoming will be taking place this Saturday evening along with our Friday parade. Hall of Honor will also be taking place this week, where Alumni Association and we are SR will be hosting the ceremony in the auditorium this Thursday evening. The Drama Department is preparing for their fall play production, which you'll be able to watch October 3rd to the 5th at the Santa Fel Theater. Follow-up from our clubs, our clubs have begun to prepare for upcoming events, such as Noche de Cultura hosted by our Latinos and Nieves Club. Additionally, through the Italian club, there will be an Italian performer, T.O. Buck, I believe, coming to sing at an assembly. Athletics, the volleyball team, has had one loss and 16 wins this season, with many more victories to come. First Lady Football had two wins, including a victory over TAM just two weeks ago. Lastly, our cheerleaders have began preparing for their competition season, which will begin in November. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Camacho. Any updates you would like to share with us on your first day joining us?
Yeah, I was very prepared. But on behalf of Madrona, I want to say that Madrona is a very good school. I've been there, this is my second year, final year. And we started off, we started off the year with a full, full school event with a speaker from, who, I forgot his name, but he did a TED Talk and he helped us with learning about like masks, showing what we show on the outside and what we hide on the inside. So it's like, we pretty much got to know everybody in the school without knowing who it was. So we learned a lot of things about how some students are worried about grades and they're worried about the school year, being at a new school. Some of the juniors said that about Madrona being a whole new school, different experience for them, less classes, less hours. And then a few weeks later, we went on a field trip to a ropes course in Sonoma as a full school. And we split off on teams, meeting new people, new juniors, new seniors. And overall, Madrona's been doing pretty good. I feel nothing that I can argue about, so.
Oh, well, thank you. See, that's a great update. You were totally prepared. Thank you, trustee. Thank you for being here. That's a great update. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and with, after our great student trustees, I would love to have our labor partners and come forward if they have updates as well.
I believe online, we have Donnie Joe Pipkin with CSCA and Molly O'Donoghue with SRTA. They should be coming over. I can let you know who comes up first if they want to begin. It looks like Molly is here. Molly?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Diaz-Gazels and community. I am Molly O'Donoghue, the Vice President of the Santa Fel Teachers Association and first grade teacher at Laurel Dell. This evening, I'm reporting on behalf of Santa Fel Teachers Association members in the grades TK and Early Intervention through 8th grade. First, we would like to share that at the next board meeting on October 14th, we will be sharing our Sunshine Items for this year's round of contract negotiations. That same week, our members in TK and Early Intervention through 5th grade, as well as our Venetia Valley Middle School, will be meeting with caregivers, families, and students in conferences. That Monday, on the Non-Student Day, Davidson and Venetia Valley Middle Schools will participate in professional development together, well, our elementary counterparts' conference on that day. Last week, SRTA leadership, site reps, and some members participated in the first Budget Advisory Committee. While the conversations around budget will not be easy, we look forward to that collaboration in order to support our students and educators alike. We want to, we want what is best for our students and our colleagues. In considering budgetary conversations, we also would like to comment on tonight's agenda item regarding the McPhail Surplus property. We appreciate the transparency around the district's decision to pause on the potential sale of the property in order to ensure that the property is sold at fair market value while continuing with two leases for the old Galinas site with Wild Care and Galinas Valley Little League. We look forward to further conversations about funds that can help provide the best teaching and learning environments for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
And we have Donnie Joe Pipkin with CSCA. Donnie, you should be able to unmute yourself and begin.
Good evening, Superintendent Diaz-Gazels, School Board Trustees, and District Leadership. My name is Donnie Joe Pipkin, and I am the Chapter Secretary for CSCA. We are pleased to see the number of classified employees who are being approved this evening to receive academic stipends. This recognizes the vital role we play in supporting student learning. As classified professionals, we regularly go above and beyond to provide academic support. By offering academic stipends, we are formally recognizing this dedication. This addition to our contract is not just about compensation, it's about respect, acknowledgement, and ensuring that classified staff feel valued for their critical contributions. CSCA looks forward to beginning this next round of negotiations. While significant strides have been taken, negotiations are a continuing process, and there is more work to be done to ensure fair and equitable outcomes for our classified staff. We look forward to our continued partnership, the continued strengthening of our collaborative relationship. Thank you again for your time, your partnership, and your ongoing commitment to our school community.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening and your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
SRTA has no report tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, and with that, I go to my wonderful fellow trustees on their updates or announcements. Trustee Lau.
I'll go first. Thank you, President Mateen. So first of all, happy Hispanic Heritage Month to everyone. On September 10th, I joined Superintendent Diaz-Gazel to attend the head support meeting, kicking off their first, the new year. They are really a great group, are very committed, volunteer and professional. I want to really personally thank them and acknowledge their commitment and contribution to the district and all the students and their family. Just to give our fellow trustee an update, they, during the meeting, they review and approved the 2024-25 year end actio and also the new budget for '25-'26, which is very exciting. They also discussed board recruitment. One of their goals to make sure that they have representation from all school sites. So I believe they currently don't have one from TL, from Talia High School. So if you know of anyone that might be interested, please ask them to reach out to head support or simply refer them to me or the superintendent is, I'm sure they will be happy to make the connection. Somebody looking forward to, they are looking for new grant opportunity. I share some of my connection with them, but if you also have any opportunity, please feel free to reach out and let them know. Some important days ahead, to look ahead. There, they have an in-person board retreat on November 12. The carnival kickoff this year is gonna be March 11. And the carnival we all looking forward to is April 25th on Saturday. It's gonna be a great day, sunny day. I'm sure, I'm for sure. And then they also have the annual consistent achiever reception on May 24, on Thursday next year. So September is also the suicide prevention awareness month. So I want to also thank the district for recognizing the importance of the mental health and wellness of our students to raise awareness about suicide prevention, reminding, remember those also who lost to suicides, share the message of hope with our district and our students and staff alike. I lost my mom to suicide. She was one of the strongest and the most hardworking person I've ever met, myself. She was also a school teacher, but she had to quit her job to take care of, to stay home to take care of myself and my brother when I was born. So, and my brother is also a severe mental, that's a fear mental and physical challenges. So she also did that all by herself for 20 years after my father passed away due to cancer. So this could happen to anyone at any time. So when my son actually showed me, he's a student at TL, his new student ID card has a QR code at the back, at the finger at the back of the side to provide support, services, and hotline. I also thank the district for doing, you know, a little small thing so to make sure that we bring the resources and be thoughtful and proactive. So I hope by serving on the school board myself, I also can extend my mom's love to everyone and the message of hope to others. This is my 10 years serving on the Marine Childcare Commission. This, the mission of the Childcare Commission is to lead and to support county-wise plan and effort to ensure access to high-quality early care and education services to our young children, to our young students. For almost 10 years, I will get actually term out by the end of October. On September 15th, I attended my last commission meeting and retreat. At this last meeting, I was actually very proud to share with the commissioner, our school district, our board actually approved and include, approved to include the month of the young child on April 2026 in our board resolution that we just passed this last month to support the need of each and every student for the ongoing recognition and awareness. I'm also very happy to see our director, our very own Director of Community partnership, Pepe Conceala. He was there in attendance, representing our SLCS district there. He highlighted the Early Intervention P-School Program, our TK K-classes at the Early Learning Center at Shaw School. I would be, I'm very proud to say that the commissioner and our partner from the Early Childhood Education ECE Department and MCOE, they were all very impressed by the work we have done for the district in this area. So I just want to share this very proud moment with our fellow trustee and the great work that we have done to promote our TK and Early Intervention program. That's my update.
Thank you, trustee Lau. Thank you for that. All right, trustee Deniava Marsh.
Good evening, everyone. Since our last meeting, I'd like to share some highlights. Joint Legislative Action Committee, or JLLAP, on September 8th, I attended the JLLAP committee meeting. JLLAP brings together trustees and superintendents in all 17 of our Marin's County school districts to advocate for the over 30,000 public school students in our community. And this committee monitors pending legislation for the state budget and works closely with legislative aides and contracts with our Ball Foss Group to represent Marin's priorities in Sacramento. And this is just something I want to elevate, especially since we are talking about, you know, budget and how we can be creative and work together in community. JLLAP schools are to strengthen relationships with our local legislators and build a cohesive team of education leaders across the county. So this is a monthly meeting that occurs, and I'm very proud to be our SRCS representative, but also I'm your delegate assembly representative representing all 17 school districts to the larger California School Board Association. Why this matters is because these are additional pathway points. If there are opportunities for legislation, policy, advocacy work, these are spaces that you can connect with, and I wanted to uplift that. Superintendent on the move with Superintendent Diaz-Gazel's new, not program, like very visible, exciting space to go across our 12 school districts. I mean, 12 schools. On September 17th, I joined her at Bahia Vista Elementary alongside their principal and their assistant principal, and we visited every classroom and had the chance to meet with their student council. And I was very impressed with the joyful, welcoming culture that's being fostered at Bahia Vista. And it was inspiring to watch Superintendent Diaz-Gazel's engage their student council with a meaningful conversation about their experiences. I won't take that away from her because it was really cool to walk. So I'll have her have that for her update. But community engagement is so key. I also had the opportunity to represent Santa Fel City Schools at several community events. The Marin County Cooperation Team Annual Celebration, Marin Court Appointed Special Advocates Annual Gala, the reopening of our downtown Santa Fel Library, where I proudly picked up my new 150th anniversary library card, and also at Santa Fel Porch Fest, where Santa Fel High's Jazz Combo performed. And even students from Sun Valley Elementary School had snacks and homemade lemonade to sell to raise funds for their school. They accepted Venmo, which I was very excited about because I did not have cash as an elder millennial. A highlight for me was definitely the world premiere of Voices of the First, a youth-created documentary hosted by the Youth Leadership Institute. Terlinda High School student Melanie Garcia moderated the panel, and she helped to shine a spotlight on the importance of storytelling, resources, and the challenges for first-generation college students. And finally, this week is United Against Hate Week, and I want to thank our Santa Fel City Schools for participating in this week in coordination with the City of Santa Fel. It's not just specifically to City of Santa Fel. A lot of communities across the country are celebrating this week. A lot of communities across the country are celebrating this week. But what's great is that SRCS is specifically doing it with activities and coordination of curriculum with students and educators on the campuses. This movement was created to counter the rise in expressions of hate by empowering local communities to take action. And by working together, we can restore respect, embrace diversity, and build inclusive, equitable communities for all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Dinamah Marsh. You're very busy, both of you trustees. Okay, trustee Kerner.
I don't have any updates outside of, I do my time.
Oh, great. Thank you for that. I don't have very many updates either. I just did want to say happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I also did not attend the opening of the library as a representative. I just went as a mom with my kids.
Hey, man, I wish I was a mom, so.
After a grueling soccer match that we won, so I did attend the opening of the library. I hope everyone will go to the library. It's so beautiful. And also the quiet spaces was a big thing. Very excited about carnival. I was going to bring that up. Thank you, trustee Lau. Also, I want to remind everyone that we have had one budget meeting so far. We will have budget advisory committee meetings that are coming up. So those will be in person, so please welcome all that want to attend that. And with that, I've also been at Davidson Middle School quite a bit and learning more about my students being there. So with that, those are all of my updates. And we'll hand them over to our wonderful superintendent.
Thank you. Very quickly, it was great to be at Bahia Vista. We are doing Student Voice this year to highlight our strategic plan revision. I asked them two questions. What do you love about your school? And if you could change one thing, what would it be? And what came out of what do you love about your school was the kind, caring environment that they have in their classrooms, and it's very evident. Their teachers' classrooms are the second teacher. And what they wanted to change was more fast food at lunch. Let's see, what else?
Specifically, I think it was like that chicken place that they wanted.
Raising cane.
Raising cane. They wanted a raising cane on their campus.
More field trips. So in October, October the 8th, I will be at San Pedro Elementary doing the same thing, so I'm very excited about that. We had 106 participants, 107 participants at the DLLAC meeting. Thank you to Ceci and to Carla and to Pepe for all of the work that you do. We introduced the strategic plan. Mr. Marcucci will be back in October to talk to the DLLAC families about our budget advisory committee and our upcoming reductions. And I will be back in November to talk about the strategic plan. Myself, Mr. Marcucci, Ms. Avalos, and Ms. Perez Quintana all attended the Schools Rule Gala Saturday night. That was a fun event. And then we also, I will be attending Thursday, the Hall of Honor at San Rafael High. And please, if you have time, we would love for you to participate in Strategic Plan Task Force or the Budget Advisory Committee. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, superintendent. All right, and now it's time for the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have any, anyone that would like to lift anything or pull anything?
President Mateen, we should back up for public comments.
Oh, sorry. You're right. Thank you. Now, let's go back. Do I have any public comments on non-agendaized items? Something that is not on this agenda. Do I have any in the room? If so, come forward or on Zoom.
Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they wish to give a public comment online.
I'll give it a moment.
Yep.
Again, those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature to give a public comment.
Same then.
Okay, thank you. I just saw the comments in front of me, but I know that these are agendaized comments, okay? Again, if you have comments, please make sure you fill out the blue form. All right, so now let's refresh approval of the consent agenda. Do I have anything that anyone has any comments or concerns or anything they would like to pull? I personally was going to say I'm very excited to see the field trips, the arts, the music, the trips that I've been seeing that our students will be experiencing. So I did take a look at all of those and just so excited for our students to have access to those experiences. But if I don't have any comments or items that have been pulled, I would seek an approval.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, moved by trustee Dinamah Marsh.
I second the motion.
Seconded by trustee Kerner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent items moved. Okay, so now we are moving to discussion in action. So for those that are new, we are now in number one. Business Services Approval of Resolution 2526-12. The Board of Education of San Rafael City Elementary School District declaring its intention to sell certain surplus real property known as the McFale site.
Yes. This item is regarding Resolution 2526-12. Through this resolution, the board would declare its intention to sell the McFale site. The elementary school district owns the surplus property, which covers about 9.76 acres and is located on Vendola Drive in the Santa Venetia area of San Rafael. McFale was declared surplus in 1979 by the board following the recommendation of a 711 committee. It was reaffirmed as a surplus property three times after that, including most recently in March of 2024. While the district does not have any current or anticipated future educational use or need for the McFale site, we understand this property is an important part of our district and greater community. It is also a considerable asset, and it is the district's desire to make the highest and best use of the property to benefit our San Rafael City School students, our community, and the financial health of the district. I'm going to hand it off now to Deputy Superintendent Bob Marcucci to share some more background and information about the proposed resolution. Bob?
Thank you, Superintendent Geisell. Just a part of, want to highlight as part of the extensive history of this property. The site was previously sold by the district in 1994, and then it came back to the district when a loan was in default. And as Superintendent Geisell shared, I want to emphasize that the district recognizes that surplus properties are important to the community. That's why, even though we had previously complied with the statutory priority offering requirements in March of 2024, the district voluntarily provided priority notice to certain public entities and eligible nonprofit charitable public benefit corporations of the availability of the McFale for sale, lease, or lease with option to purchase. Several groups did submit proposals for the various sites, and responses were sent, and good faith negotiations ensued. As a result, the board approved two leases for the old Galena site, one with Wild Care, the other with Galena's Valley Little League that we heard a little bit about earlier tonight. We're excited to continue these partnerships with these two organizations that serve our community. Regarding the McFale site, the district received two eligible and compliant written offers and one non-eligible written offer to purchase and/or lease with option to purchase the site. The district issued a counteroffer to and engaged in good faith negotiations with each of the eligible and compliant offers for an extended period. However, the district was not able to come to what we believe is an acceptable purchase agreement for the sale of the McFale site. It was recently that negotiations concluded with a local private family foundation. We appreciate their interest and engagement, and yet we remain committed to our duty to our students to ensure that the property is only sold at fair market value. Therefore, the district staff recommends that the board proceed to offer the McFale site for sale to the general public using the competitive bid process described in Education Code. Funds from, it's important to note that funds from the sale or lease of this property must go toward capital improvements and/or ongoing facility maintenance in the elementary school district. So this is not a way to have the district's general fund budget. This is only for facilities. We're grateful to have been able to significantly operate our schools in recent years, but rising costs have meant that unfortunately there are many projects that may not come to fruition without additional funding, and especially for some of the needed projects in our elementary schools, of which McFale is a part. After completing the initial steps through a thoughtful process, the district is focused on the McFale property. The district has determined that concentrating efforts on a single property is an efficient way for staff and the board to maximize its use and engage with the community. Education Code requires that prior to the public sale, the board declare by a two-thirds vote of its members its intention to sell the McFale site and set the minimum price and the terms upon which the McFale site will be sold. In addition, the board is required to schedule a public meeting of the board at which seated proposals and oral bids to purchase the site will be received and considered by the board. The resolution outlines these items and more in great detail, including that written sealed bids must be received to San Rafael City Schools by 5:00 PM on January 23, 2026. Oral bids meeting the requirements may be made at the public meeting. The minimum bid shall be no less than $6 million. At the board's open meeting on January 27, 2026, the board will receive, open, examine, and consider, including accepting or rejecting all received sealed bids to purchase and any eligible oral bids made at that time. The board shall make final acceptance of the highest and best bid or reject all bids. Again, the details of these requirements are described thoroughly in the resolution. The district will continue to share information and seek feedback from the community as the process advances, as much as done this entire time. We remain dedicated to transparent decision-making if the board adopts the resolution to sell and moving forward if the board considers accepting a bid. To provide information to groups near the McFale property, the district has reached out to the Santa Venetia Neighborhood Association, the North Bridge Homeowners Association, and other local stakeholders. District leadership is open and available for discussions with the neighborhood groups, and we are committed to regularly posting updates on our website. Unless the board has any questions of me at this time, I propose we open for a public comment.
Thank you. All right. I do believe I have, I have open comments here, and I believe we have roughly 10. So with that, I will give everyone a minute and a half to speak. So I will call you up if you can come up and join us. And Christina will start the timer, and we welcome you to join us. Okay, first I have Giselle Block. Please join us.
Thanks, everybody. I've had a student in the district. He just graduated, and he's in college, first year of college. He had a great experience at San Rafael High, so thank you.
Congrats.
Just a little background. My name is Giselle Block. I live in the neighborhood. I've been there for over 20 years in the community surrounding McFale's. It's been there for, gosh, three years, just sitting there, right? A lot of blight on the neighborhood, a lot of vandalism, different things. So it's wonderful to see that we're going to get the best use from that property. I chaired the development of the community plan in our neighborhood, and one of the really key points in that community plan was that we use this property as an opportunity to have a community center, a place where students, the community, and others can come together, learn, enjoy the neighborhood, play. And, you know, I just can't tell you how upset I am that this fell apart. Just like we worked so hard. And, you know, like, I don't get it, Bob, you know, you say highest and best use for the community and the students, and that we go for highest, best bid. So I don't know how those two things reconcile. They don't reconcile in my head. You know, you hear one thing, and then you hear the other. So this is not the highest and best use for the community? Maybe the highest and best use for the students. I'm all for the students. But still, I implore you, the outcome should be valued in what we choose in the outcome, not only for the students but for the community as well, and that we think outside the box about how to make this negotiation go.
Thank you so much for joining us, Giselle. Next, I have Linda Levy, please.
Hi. My name is Linda Levy. I've lived next to the property for over 35 years. I grew up in San Rafael. I went to San Pedro, Davidson, and San Rafael High School. Proud graduates. I didn't really prepare anything. I always prepare something because I wasn't going to speak because it just, the wind is gone from my sails. We have been working on this project for years and years, and all of us here, or many of us here, donate time to our community doing various things. I'm on the San Venetia Neighborhood Association Board. I'm the treasurer, and I do the newsletter. So it feels like we give a lot to our community. I have an opportunity not to pay taxes for San Rafael High School on my property taxes, but I don't click that box because I love to support my kids and I love to support my community. And I just ask that you consider, when you look at offers, when this property is gone, we will lose our chance for having a community asset. We tried to get Wild Care in there. We tried, we tried a million things. We've worked with the San Rafael City School District for quite a while doing all these different things. So that's all. I just want to say, we are hoping we can still further our agenda for best use for our community.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for being here. Hey, Robin. I have Robin. Is it Kissler?
Yep. Hi.
Hi.
Good to see you all. Good evening, board. I want to thank you for your stewardship of the district assets, specifically the McFale property site. And considering what's best for both students and our broader community, while I understand the desire to secure the best use and market value for the McFale school site, I urge you to honor the longstanding vision of this property as a community center and gathering space that we already use. This location is uniquely suited to serve our youth, our families, and seniors with programs, activities, and events that strengthen our social and cultural fabric. Selling to private entities and developers may provide short-term revenue, but larger development is neither compatible with the fragile wetlands along the San Pablo Bay nor aligned with the community's needs and wants. We received recently over 217 emails to our nonprofit website, SV Commons, in support of our vision of a Santa Venetia Community Common Center, which is hard to ignore. That's a lot of people in a very short time. So there's a lot of community advocacy for this. As you hear, we're all very passionate about this project. A community center, as you know, would enhance the educational mission of the district in a broader sense, possibly supporting students and teachers beyond the classroom and fostering intergenerational connection. The true value of the site is not only financial, but social, cultural, and environmental. You know, in a climate where education is being defunded, where diversity is under attack, and history is being erased all around us. It is, may I finish, please? It is up to districts like ours to build partner spaces, partner spaces, that foster the arts, inspire cultural experiences, build community spirit, and uplift our students beyond the limits of traditional education. I respectfully ask the board to continue to work with the local nonprofits in addition to the private entities, including Pozzola and SV Commons, to make McFale site a fundamental community resource rather than selling it off to the highest bidder. Thank you for your leadership and for listening to the voices of the community.
Thank you so much, Robin, for being here. Okay, I have Susan. I'm sorry, I can't, your wonderful handwriting, it's like I miss it. Okay, thank you. How do you say your last name?
Rep. Dendio.
Rep. Dendio. Thank you.
By the way, I went to school here at Terlinda High School and graduated in 1967. I was born and raised in Santa Venetia. My father bought the house in 1950, and so I went to school there when it first opened, the John McFale School. And then it closed down, and it was a center for arts and... And I'm looking at all this because I still live in Santa Venetia. I think that the property should be used to put back into the community. I'm not real clear on all this money and, I don't know. I just think it's senior center, children's, some kind of educational thing, either growing vegetables and showing how to eat off the earth. I don't know. Something other than send it to the highest bidder that could destroy the community of Santa Venetia. I think it should be put back into the thing of what people within our community can use it. And that's my feeling about it. It's very calm, quiet community. We don't need a bunch of cars coming into Santa Venetia by some contractor that wants to build a high-rise, 100-unit place. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hey, I have Dory Winter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident of Santa Venetia. I live probably about half a mile from the site. And of course, I'm very interested in what's going to happen there because I love the levee and I love the rural feeling of Santa Venetia. It's a very unusual place. Most people haven't heard of it. That's one of its great advantages. And I hope that the space there can be looked... And I hope that the space there can be looked at with enough imagination to think of what really could happen there, a little along the lines of the question of environmental, agricultural, climate possibilities. Because the last proposal that came along for the community center struck me as being a little bit commercial. Now, there's got to be some commercial aspects to whatever happens there, but I feel that the the potential for that site is unique. There is a lot of space there, however many acres you just said, and it could be something really wonderful that the entire county can appreciate, especially the young people who may not have other opportunities to be exposed to the kind of
That's time.
Things that could happen there.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much, Dory. Jason Todd?
Jason Todd? Hi, hi, board, how are you? I'm not good at public speaking, but I'm a resident of Santa Venetia. I urge the board to go back to the voting table. While I fully support the need for more affordable housing and low-income apartments, I believe this location is unsuitable. From a graphical standpoint, there are more appropriate sites for such developments, particularly those away from the delicate ecosystem of Venetia. My understanding is that several low-income developments are already being planned closer to the freeway, public transportation, stores, and commerce such as the St. Vincent's and North Gate Mall. As my neighbors in Santa Venetia are aware, our community already experienced a significant traffic congestion on North San Pedro, especially near the Jewish Community Center and Santa Venetia School. That's why they built that school there, because it's easier to get out of that neighborhood. Adding more housing to the McPhail property would undoubtedly exacerbate these existing traffic problems. I urge the district to reconsider selling the property for housing, and instead, I hope the district will explore the option of selling it to Santa Venetia Commons for use as a community center and parkland for all residents to enjoy. Best use for students and families of Santa Fe does not mean most money. Young people need to be a part of nature and enjoy the space that, the special space that it is.
Thank you so much.
I have Crystal Yesman. Hi, Crystal Yesman, I have a son in the Santa Fe City School District. So the Housing Planning Department at Marin County says that you can build seventy units on that site, seventy. And I believe that the nonprofits that submitted proposals did submit a fair market value price based on comparables. I won't go into the details, but to, it's the board's obligation to sell that property for its highest and best use, not for the most money, but for its highest and best use. And as you've heard here today, and through the proposals in the community, that highest and best use is for the community. Now, I wonder in nineteen ninety-four, what the cost was on that particular sale. So now here we are in twenty twenty-five, and you set a price at six million dollars for that site. It's, to me, it sounds like it's all about the money, and that the board is not considering highest and best use. So I urge you tonight to vote no on this resolution, to put it out to bid to the highest bidder, and instead, go back to the table, have more discussions, bring in the rest of the community members that put in that proposal, and talk about creative options. In addition to the, to the, the price that was submitted, let's also talk about potential agreements with the city schools on how the site is used in the future, and obligating the future owners to those commitments. And so that the students and the public can have that for the highest and best use. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. John, can you come forward, please? Thank you.
Yes, hi, John Metcalf, I'm certainly watching. So, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate hearing all the good stories about what everybody's doing for the community, we really appreciate that. Same thing, though, this community, extremely disappointed, extremely sad that we couldn't get to a deal. We worked so hard, my wife and I have been living right next to the property for over twenty years. It's just, it's emotional for us, just because we've worked so hard to get to where we want to be. Now, we talk about highest and best use, when you think about that, think about equity, community, and joy. But maybe you should add community center, maybe you should add compassion, maybe you should also be adding conserva- conservation, and maybe also posterity. This is what we're all about, all of the neighbors who have been there for cumulative over hundreds of years of being there in this community, living there, watching this property in squalor. When we first lived there, it was in complete squalor, and we haven't seen much improvement since. A lot of the faces I see, we didn't see last time we had this discussion, a lot of people here are new. So where is the continuity? Where is the compassion for the community? I understand the fiduciary obligation that we have to have to the school, I understand that completely. But I do believe that we can come to a fair and reasonable balanced approach to how this property gets to the actual highest and best use. And so we implore you to think about that and the community as you continue to make your decisions. Thank you.
I will say, John, I've seen you quite a bit, so I have been here. So next I call Gina Hagan, please.
And I filled out a card for myself personally, I'm also the president of the Neighborhood Association, so I don't know if I can add just a brief comment as the president of the Neighborhood Association.
The board's discretion. Sure, we can go for two minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, board members, superintendent Diaz Casals, and staff, my name is Gina Hagan, and I live in Santa Venetia, block away from the McPhail school site. I have two students in the Santa Fe City School District, and I attended as well. I used to walk my older sister to school at McPhails when the school was open. It, as you've heard, has gone through many transitions, and the, for most of my lifetime, the school has been not occupied, it's been going further and further into disrepair. It's been a magnet for all sorts of blight and unsightly behavior from people who come and just think that it can be used as a dump, because that's what it looks like to a lot of people. And the community has been working for many, many years with Santa Fe City Schools, through numerous boards and superintendents. We have worked with our county supervisors, people in Marin County parks, I also sit on the CSA eighteen advisory board for parks in our community. And we are really hopeful that after years, if not decades, of expressing interest in procuring the McPhail site, in hopes of realizing a variety of what I would consider low-impact dreams to preserve and protect the natural and unique environmental aspects of the property, create a park or passive recreational space, or finally having a community center space for our youth, our elders, and everyone in our community to gather, including for emergency kinds of situations. And, but in none of the meetings, or outreaches, or working groups, or, or feedback that we've received as a community, have I ever heard that anyone wants a large-scale development at that site. We have limited, we have limited ingress and egress into the neighborhood, and we also live in the wui, the wildland urban interface, so it's really best for our community and our safety to have a lower-impact option, and we really would do hope to continue to be able to work with Santa Fe City Schools to realize that. And please, I urge you to not go forward with putting this out to bid to the public and accepting the biggest ticket dollar amount that you can get. We really value this as a community space and hope to continue to partner with you as you help shape the future of our community. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Gina, I believe we were on school site council like Glenn would together.
Yes.
Back in the day, good to see you again. Yes, I thought you looked very familiar, thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, and with that, I am going to turn it to my fellow trustees.
Any comments on Zoom?
Oh, any comments on Zoom, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature to give a public comment. Again, this is for the item related to the McPhail resolution. I'm seeing Jake. So Jake, you are able to unmute yourself and to begin talking. We have one minute and thirty seconds. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, Jake, for joining us this evening. Again, anyone else on Zoom can use the raise hand feature to give a public comment. Same that.
Okay, thank you so much, and thanks for the reminder of the people on Zoom. Okay, with that, I will go back to our dear fellow trustees, and with any comments, I would open it to trustee Lau.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, our neighbors, for being here. As a trustee, I was reminded the fact that, you know, that our primary focus of the school board in this district is to educate our students and protect the best interests of those, you know, in our school district. So the board, you know, our fellow board members, we discuss, and we have a really important responsibility to maintain a long-term health and financial integrity of the district. So this is a really difficult decision for us, for the board, especially we are dealing with a structural deficit, as well as a really lower reserve level. Though I know that I recognize our district doesn't operate in a vacuum, I'll support, especially our funding, come from our local community, our neighbors. Without them, without you, we won't be, you know, we will be without, you know, the voter-approved parcel tax measure that was approved in two thousand twenty-one, and our modernization bond measure that support by also our neighbors in two thousand twenty fifteen and two thousand twenty-two, now that we enjoying and seeing all the wonderful facility that has been being developed and improving on school site. I would say, yeah, unlike a private business, a locals, as a local public education agency, I believe we do have a responsibility between maximizing both the district financial interest and the public interest of benefit. I want to acknowledge, though, our district and appreciate our district commitment to transparency and the public engagement that we have done over and beyond in really handling the surface property, that, that conversation even came before I joined the board, so I know this has been a really ongoing conversation. For example, our district has sent a courtesy notice to provide our Neighborhood Association, who are interested in the site, and also all the additional outreach effort and to extending all the negotiation and review process to really kind of gauge and provide the opportunity for the priority offer to come forward. Personally, I witnessed firsthand the power of community partnership at the Indian Valley Campus of College of Marine, I came here, moved to California in two thousand eleven. I work for the College of Marine Committee College District. I have offices above campuses. To be very honest, back in the day, ten years, fifteen, almost fifteen years ago, there's no one's want to be either teach or take classes at the IVC campus, it's like a desert. The buildings there, the facility on the campus are really poorly, in really poor condition. The campus was highly underutilized. But through the partnership with local nonprofits such as the Nevada Rotary and the Friends of IVC, the community invested to build a new pool. We even have an Olympic side diving board, diving pool over there. The new Jonas Center, I'm sure that probably many of you have been there by now. They have a special event there, not only every, maybe not every day, but every weekend, the transformation is really real. And also as the current board chair for the Friends of China Camp, I learned the history of the China Camp State Park at some point. The property there was going to turn into a commercial development. Luckily, in nineteen seventy-seven, it was transformed into a state park after the developer actually donated the land to to the state, so that we can preserve the history and the natural beauty of China Camp State Park. And I think we also, the district also recognized the community plan that approved by the board of trustee back in two thousand seventeen. So I know that we have been very mindful about the future development of the site to protect the existing natural features, particular the proximity of the property to the wetlands and the tidal marsh area. I don't want to put Bob, Deputy Superintendent, on the spot, but I was reading some of the articles in the past, and I think Bob actually said it very well back in the, in the I J, quote him in June twentieth. Sometime the quote in the I J may not exactly be the same, but, but that's what he said. Our selling the per-surface property was less about making money, or money-making, than bringing them up to date. And I think that's exactly what the district is trying to do, is to bring it up to date. The district is trying to seek the highest and the best use for each of our property. And we are really looking for, we have the obligation to offer them as the fair market value to allow us to continue to meet the need of our students, and which is, which this school board is responsible for. So I hope tonight by decaring the intent to sell the surface property, I hope this is not the end, but it's the beginning, let's continue the conversation. One of our former trustee, Paul Cullen, in two thousand eighteen said, something is going to happen there, we just need to figure out what. And I hope that we can still work together to figure out what we can do with that property, so that's my.
Thank you, thank you. No comment. Thank you, trustee, trustee Carter.
I just want to say thank you all for your comments, I'm very familiar with the area, I actually drive that route through China Camp each day, and I do spend time there with my dog sometime, like walking there, so I understand what a great place that whole area is, and the whole state park that opens up once you drive past that. So just wanted to reassure you that we hear you, and we still have to consider what is, you know, the best thing for our schools and what is going to be best for the students, so as we move forward with this process, we'll keep all of these things in mind.
Thank you, trustee Carter. I think, I want to thank everyone for coming out, I've seen you many times, I appreciate you coming and joining us in community in these meetings, and I know this is a very difficult conversation for both sides, and I want to echo that, you know, the students are our forefronts, and I echo what trustee Carter said, but I hope we're still in conversation and making the best decision possible for our students and our community, so thank you for joining us. I believe I need an action, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So do I have an action to move, or a motion to move this forward?
A motion to move?
Move by trustee Lau, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, didn't you have a march? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion has passed, thank you so much, okay. Now we are moving on to human resources approval of resolution two five two six dash five, two five two six dash six, two five two six dash seven, two five two six dash eight. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, President Martin, so I am presenting to you a, for resolutions that will need to be approved separately. For the elementary school district, authorizing certain certificated staff to teach in a departmentalized setting for approval, there are four teachers at Davidson Middle School who hold a multiple-subject credential that are teaching in a, either English or social studies classroom, so they are currently, they may be working toward acquiring the single-subject credential. However, we do need this resolution to be However, we do need this resolution to be approved and are requesting that. So that is our approval. Again, this would need four separate approvals for each resolution.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that guidance. So do I have approval for two-five-two-six dash five? Move by trustee Kerner, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by didn't have a march. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for two-five-two-six dash six?
Motion.
Move by trustee, I'll go Kerner, and then I'll get the second by didn't have a march. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna roll with it. Let's do that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Do I have two-five-two-six dash seven?
Motion.
Kerner, move by trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
Second.
By didn't have a march. Okay, one, and then one more, two-five-two-six dash eight.
Motion to approve.
By trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Second by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all three of, one, two, three, four resolutions passed. Thank you so much for bringing those forward.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have business services approval of receipt of donations. Yes.
Light. Be the voice. You're so tired. No joking. With gusto. Now.
Well, I'll lead this off by just saying, y'all remember the song that goes, domo arigato mister roboto? Our first donation of the night is from Elizabeth and Nick Nody.
Wow.
To the Santa Fall High School Robotics Club.
Aye.
Two hundred dollars to the Santa Fall High School Robotics Club. I'm sure you can buy a fair number of actuators with two hundred dollars. Our next donation tonight comes from Gillian and Carrie Nice. I believe that's how you pronounce that. And, you know, sometimes this, this particular item tonight is a little bit of the kitchen sink, which they did not purchase for the Sun Valley staff room, but they did purchase a microwave valued at one hundred forty dollars. So thank you to the Nice family for the microwave at Sun Valley. And finally, we have, everybody likes to wear swag, especially if you're in the LEAD program at Venetia Valley, and you're going to be super thankful because the PTA at Venetia Valley donated three thousand dollars to the after-school program so that they could wear their shirts and be proud of being a part of the LEAD program. So total donation tonight, three, I think this, oh no, that is, math is correct. It's three thousand dollars. Did I say that about the T-shirts?
Yes, yes.
Say three.
Good. Total donation tonight is three thousand three hundred forty dollars. Thank you to the Nodies, the Nice's, and the Venetia Valley PTA.
Yay, that's exciting. And with that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move by trustee didn't have a march. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, those donations, thank you so much. Those are so critical to our students. So appreciate those. Okay, now we have staff reports. Superintendent, back-to-school report to the board.
Yes, this is a very exciting report that we're giving because it's regarding our students, our community, our schools. So I'm going to have a little help tonight because there's a lot of areas that we're. So if you, Ms. Perino, would, thank you so much. So this is the review of our report tonight. We're going to talk about our district data, some back-to-school highlights, and some key endeavors that we are taking on district-wide. And have some time for questions from the board or members of the public and members of the public. So our district data initially, so I want you to focus on this. This is our student enrollment for twenty-four, twenty-five, and our student enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six. This is a snapshot that was taken on September nineteenth in both years.
Okay.
You will notice some changes, and it's unfortunate. I have been told by my colleagues all over the state that they're seeing some changes like this across the state because of certain outside factors. So we are, as you can see, down about, was the math right, Mr. Markucci, about two hundred and ten students here in both the elementary and the high school district?
Yes, that does make sense.
Okay. Now, in student transportation in twenty-four, twenty-five, we had sixteen buses. We have sixteen buses again this year. We have thirty-one routes. We have one extra route, but we've lost thirty-six riders. And I think that extra route, Mr. Markucci, is to the after-school program that we were?
Yes, there, we did add a, there's extra routes in the AM and the PM. Yes, but that is the, providing some more service from one of our elementary schools, Sun Valley, to an after-school program across town because of the need in terms of the numbers of students that need that, that particular.
That's why we have the plus one. And then if we go to our attendance, even though we are down in student enrollment, we are proud to say that we are standing firm as far as our attendance so far. A snapshot, almost a year apart, you can see the numbers for TK five, six, eight, and nine, twelve. So we are at least ninety-seven percent in the TKs through five, ninety-six point eight at six, eight, and ninety-six point four at the high school. Nutrition services. Bob, do you want to speak briefly about this?
Yeah, just that, I think everybody knows that we are providing free breakfast and lunch for all students, and that has been transformative for the, for the nutrition services and for the stigma that maybe used to be around who got meals and who didn't, and now everybody wants a meal. Average daily participation, I always think this is really interesting that, you know, over four thousand six hundred meals per day. And that represents a total of thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-seven meals. And that's a six percent decrease from August of two thousand twenty-four. A lot of that is just really due to the enrollment slide that Superintendent Geisels shared. And the average percentage of scratch meals, you know, even in the face of a lot of adversity, cost pressures, staffing pressures, they're still maintaining and increasing slightly the ability to make meals from scratch in our kitchen, so. Yeah, all good news. Hopefully, we can keep it up.
Yes. And then the area of human resources. Ms. Avalos, would you like to talk about our new staff and our programs?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Geisels. So you'll see for this school year, for elementary, we have hired twenty less. That is due to intentions, some retirements, and those positions that we may not have had to fill. And for high school district, we have hired only four. A lot of it was retention from the high school district. So for classified, we hired eleven for this school year, for the elementary, and six for the high school district. And administrators, we hired five versus seven last year and one for the high school district for this year. A lot, we had, let's see, we had sixteen teacher residents from our cohort to last school year in the program, and we hired seven for this school year. Cohort three, for this year, we have nineteen current teacher residents in the program that will be completing the program in June. They are, there's various multiple subjects, single subjects, there's some special ed. We're finding that we're getting more of a variety of people joining our cohort, that it's not just multiple subject. We're getting a lot of single subjects and special ed, so that will be a really work in our favor when we come to recruitment and hiring. There's no guarantee to those residents, but they do have a link up because they're understanding and they're in our community and our cultures and our schools and learning the environment and the programs that we offer. And we are currently accepting now for cohort four, so there are application processes in play and we're hoping that we will have reached the max at twenty-five for our fourth cohort.
So exciting.
That is great.
Very great. How many of the nineteen teacher residents in the current program are SRCS alumni?
I will, don't have that off the top of my head, but I will respond to that. I'll get you that.
A lot. Great.
Enough.
Enough.
Say probably half. I can get you that.
Thank you. I mean, that's a real testament, you know, especially hearing the kickoff for the new year, just these stories and testimonials from the students who graduated and then entered the Alder program and are coming back as teachers. So I think that's, opportunities for homegrown is great.
Definitely paying it forward for our community.
So back-to-school forms. Oh, that's right. So, Mr. Gonzalez, it's all you, my friend.
I want to go back to the HR page because the reason we have some of you classified staff that were formerly in our family centers, but then they've joined the Alder program and now teaching, so it's a very cool opportunity for them to get a path paved for them to become teachers back in their district. This is the data confirmation process where we certify from technology agreements to the parent right agreements to the free and reduced lunch and how many people live in a household and income form, so it's a very important document that used to be done. The old emergency card.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are now digital, and it's awesome that it's all on a digital platform through the Ares Parent Portal. For many of our families, this is a quick login. Check, 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 done. For some of our families, that email isn't a tool that they use daily. It is helping them, supporting them through that process. It is a great way to capture a ton of data on our families and what they're experiencing in homes with the income, the use of technology, how many kids below the age of three. A lot of information is captured here. And as you can see, we're doing very well. The little decrease in the TK through five, I personally think it's because of the increase in TKs because a TK and a K family is the first time you're going through this process, so it requires a little more effort, a little more emphasis. Once you've done it once, hopefully you can keep just logging in. The middle school is crushing it, and the high school is continuing to just do awesome, and we're seeing some increase.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I think it's also great that people recognize that when you are in middle school in the Ares portal, you can see all of your teachers. So it's kind of a tool of access to all entry points of all of your teachers, so the more we can remind parents of that, yeah, stuff, I think it's amazing.
And attendance and all the notifications.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. So back-to-school highlights. Eddes, she's going to talk about our back-to-school PD.
Yeah, I'm going to highlight just some of the back-to-school offerings for professional development that the Ed Services Department has designed and facilitated across both districts. I think there's several different ones listed. We won't go into each one in depth, but I'm always happy, or anyone from our team would be happy to talk more in depth to each of those. There's a few I want to highlight, but I want to just highlight some of the through lines for our professional development. All of our professional development is connected directly to our LCAP. And you also see that reflected in our school site plans, which you'll be approving later next month. And they really do focus on building our educator capacity to drive student growth and improve outcomes for our students. The sessions that we offered really are focused around a continuous improvement mindset. Our work as educators is never done. So I always say, what our big initiative is continuous improvement because we are always trying to improve. There are always areas to refine, and we always have to shoot for the stars when it comes to student outcomes. Three of the PDs that I will kind of briefly touch on, and you'll see a slide later on that talks more about our priorities this year, is in TK five, as you know, because you graciously approved this curriculum last year, we are implementing a new math curriculum in TK through fifth grade called the CMC Math Curriculum or the Classroom Mathematics Curriculum or Classroom Mathematics of California. That has been a fantastic launch so far. There was extensive planning that went behind this, and then we had publisher professional development happening for each grade level before the school year start. There's been some internal professional development that's happening, not just for the educators, but also for our school administrators. And there's a big math learning lab component to that curriculum, which is great because it gives an opportunity for colleagues to get into each other's classrooms and see these, this new curriculum and the practices in action. It's hugely, hugely connected to number sense. That's a big focal area of this particular this particular curriculum, which is great because it focuses on the foundational skills, reasoning, problem-solving, that students need to build a strong mathematical foundations. In secondary, we are continuing to deepen our work just around state-based teaching and learning and equitable grading practices at both the middle and high school levels. So this is a really, it's not a culminating year, but it's kind of a pivotal year in terms of taking the work that's happening the last several years around building that foundation about identifying priority standards, building out proficiency scales and common assessments, and now applying that. And in the high school district, we're really looking at settling on some common grading practices and a common grading philosophy so that we can ensure that we are utilizing fair practices. And we're really looking at growth and proficiency rather than compliance because grading can be quite subjective. So we're doing that work with our middle and high school teachers. And then lastly, district-wide, there was a PD that was offered to all of our sites and SLPs for both districts on best practices for working with multilingual learners in the special education world when you have a monolingual practitioner or a monolingual assessor. And that's really just one example of many of the work that's happening across both districts around inclusive practices and bringing together general education and special education to ensure that our students are getting a high-level experience.
And that also has to do when our students are doing there, is that a part of when our students are taking there to become ELDs?
Well, the LPAK?
Yes.
The LPAK? That, this particular training was more around for psychologists and, and speech-language pathologists. So when they are doing their evaluations and assessments with a multilingual learner or an English learner, that they're understanding some of the language context around that, the developmental, what separates language development and then language acquisition.
Right, right, right.
So it's really kind of fine-tuning those practices.
Great, thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
So did you secondary?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried to combine it because I don't want to go through every single one.
I could go through every single one, but yeah, you don't want to.
These were our back-to-school events, and thank you to those board members who attended some of these events, and they were all well-attended and very happy occasions. As far as our key endeavors, district-wide, oh, sorry, Mr. Markucci, you're not next.
I think you'll hear much more in this regard from Tim Ryan a little later tonight, but our schools are ready for a new year with lots of new construction and layered on top of that. A lot of the comments that I heard from staff was that the schools felt cleaner and you know, more maintained, and so the combination of capital facilities and Dave Bedrolli and our maintenance and operations team and custodial services just really knocked it out of the park this summer, and everybody came back. It seemed to be the buzz around town.
Exciting.
And then our district key endeavors. See that we are taking on some very important things, strategic plan, our safety and security audit, our budget priorities, our attendance campaign, Supers on the Move, our digital literacy, the ongoing construction that we'll hear more about, and our student and family monthly letters. And then centered around Ed Services, which is the heartbeat of what we do. These are the key endeavors that the elementary district and the secondary district are doing. So if you want to pick one or two to highlight.
Yeah, again, there's a lot to be said for each of these, but these are kind of the big heavy lifts or the priorities, many of which are ongoing, are kind of the next year of the plus one for each of these endeavors. I think kind of the big takeaway from all of this work is that the Ed Services team and our cabinet and district in general, we really are focused on aligning a lot of our practices, aligning the curriculum, instruction, and approaches and supports across TK twelve so that we can support our learners. We are two districts on paper, two districts in many regards, but in terms of the student experience, one district. You know, our students matriculate from eighth grade into our high schools, so it's really important that we are aligned on both ends, and we're paying particular attention to that transition from fifth into sixth, and then from eighth into ninth. Some of the other areas here that I would just highlight is these actions also truly connect to student outcomes and improving student outcomes and ensuring that there's access to students. So one example would be at the high school level, there's been an incredible amount of work done to ensure access to advanced placement classes, AP courses, as well as A through G coursework. And that could come in the form of sending more teachers so that they can teach an AP course because there's a mandated curriculum that teachers must be trained on to teach AP. It could also be sending our high school counselors to specific training so that they are really looking at a student's academic plan and to ensuring that they're getting that A through G access. I spoke a little to inclusive practices. And then just work in general, we're always working to support our multilingual learners. At the elementary level, there's quite a few works specifically around new curriculum and looking at newer curriculum for language arts, so there's a big focus of our work there. But we try and wrap this up. We, our team meets monthly, and we have TK twelve articulation, and we're looking just at the instructional through lines and looking at the systems to support that. And then we kind of go back and focus, okay, now we're in TK world, now we're in middle school world, now we're looking at this. But this gives you an idea of what this looks like in terms of everything that's in our district LCAP.
And I think, so thank you, Cecy, for that. And I think what's really, it would be not for today, it's not a question on the spot. But I really have. Uh, but I really have appreciated, I think it was like three years ago where we talked about just some pivots that we did from increasing access to AP and some things we've learned. And we also learned some of those things as we were looking at what does a graduate of our high schools look like would be helpful. I think the other thing I'm always keeping an eye on is making sure that both of our high schools don't look different, that they look the same. Because I think there's a POV out there that one school has more than the other. So the more that we can keep an eye to that, that that is like equal. Um, yeah, and I just think, you know, any any clarity on the AI guidance and implementation and where that's going to take us in the future. I think it'd be great just to come back to some of those pieces and also the middle school pilot and how that's working, especially as we know math for that cohort, especially that cohort being my children, is when COVID was happening in that math timeframe. So it'd be great to see how some of those are like progressing in the next three to four months.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share that.
Thank you.
So on that note, do you have any questions or anything we can follow up on?
I don't have any additional questions.
All right, great.
Okay, great. Right. No further questions. I'm just going to say this really quick. Um, we're going to stop and ask participants in Zoom to raise your hand if you need translation still. I don't think we have anyone using translation, so just wanting to make sure. So if you can do that, that would be great. And if we don't have any further questions, we can go to the next agenda item.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation and I would love to just get some updates on those things I identified eventually. So that would be helpful. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that. All right. Great job on the back to school report to the board. All right. So now we have a public hearing. Um, education services approval of resolution two, five, two, six dash nine sufficient textbooks and instructional materials elementary district twenty five, twenty six. Certification of compliance with the instructional materials funding realignment program for twenty five, twenty six.
It's a mouthful. This is our annual open hearing um to approve and affirm that we have done due diligence and that we have sufficient textbooks and materials for each student. So we're requesting two open hearings uh on our textbook and instructional material materials sufficiency, one for elementary, one for high school district. Um, the first hearing and the second will be the exact same is for the elementary district, resolution two, five, two, six dash nine. State law requires school boards to certify that every student has standards aligned materials in English, language arts, math, science, history, social studies, and where applicable, our language and health. Our review confirms sufficiency across all sites and staff recommends board approval of this resolution following this hearing.
Great. So I will open the public hearing for the first one, correct? All right. Do we have any? Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they wish to give a public comment. I'll give it a moment. Seen none. Seen none. Okay, we're closing that public hearing. Okay, second public hearing for the second resolution of two, five, two, six dash ten. Opening that public hearing. Then those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they wish to give a public comment. Give it a moment. Seen none. All right, we are closing that public hearing and we, anything else? I need approval. Can I get approval for?
Two different ones.
Can I get approval for two, five, two, six dash nine, the first public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Kerner, second.
Second.
By trustee DeNiva Marsh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Can I get an approval for two, five, two, six dash ten?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Kurt, moved by trustee Kerner. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee uh Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those are moved forward. Okay. Now discussion and information with capital facilities. We are ready. Here we go.
Thank you for taking the time. I know it's been a long day for everyone. Um, we are here tonight to show successes. As my boss, Bob Markucci, often tells me, uh, stop focusing on everything that's going wrong. We did a lot of things that went really well. So we're here to show you work that's been completed and invested in our school district. We have fourteen point four million dollars invested this summer at the elementary and fifteen point one million dollars at the high school district. We had at our peak five hundred people working on our campuses at one time. We have all this funded by the elementary school district parcels of fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty nine and the high school district of twenty three thousand three hundred and sixty nine. I'm going to let the video uh answer its its own que- it is eight minutes and eighty seconds long, uh and thirty nine seconds long. We'll check in halfway through to make sure. Keep going. Like me to continue or would you like to just watch this on your own?
Trustees. I think we continue. No, let's go. Halfway in.
Big mistake on the playground. We did not have Spanish in our English language. We've added it this summer. Middle school classroom got new furniture and new. Their first older rain.
Awesome.
I love that. Trustee complimented the fence.
Oh, beautiful.
This is finally closed off from. Be feeding a toilet. Some district that don't put the toilets in their videos.
So special, Tim.
Hundreds of people have worked on the pipe. Last summer, when I asked for headshots of all the design teams and construction leads, we got a hundred and thirty six. This year we've got a hundred and ninety.
Wow.
Much bigger teams. And uh. Be able to for any questions you may have.
There any videos of another constructor stuff like the body center?
There there will be. Tonight was just a celebration of things that were completed and uh we'll be making um uh new scissor reels for all the ongoing projects that are happening now. I can tell you there's tiling happening on the pool at Center Fell High.
Oh.
Oh, there we go.
I can tell you that the floor is going down in the gym. I can tell you that the amphitheater has been built here and that all the tiling and all the bathrooms are done in this building and it's really coming together very nicely.
And how much a week?
This summer was less than anticipated what was what was billed, right? So it's just under four million dollars. We 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 kept busy. I didn't know if there's any public comment online.
Yes, any public comments online? Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if you have a public comment. I see a rainbow of hands. Give it a moment. Seen that.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Need to give that to all the real estate agents that are touring our communities, thinking about our schools. Look at how great they look. All right. Thank you for that capital facilities team and everyone behind that work. Next is business services. First reading of new board policy.
Yeah, I've got an eight minute video.
There'd be drones.
So impressive. When you see it all together in one thing, I just, I do not want to follow that, especially with the first reading of a board policy and administrative regulation.
So excited, Bob.
Yes. Um, but tonight we have the first reading of a new board policy, board policy thirty five, forty four. This is one of those board policies that sort of straddles human resources and business services. So I want to give credit to our assistant superintendent of human resources, Darlene Avalos. She did a lot of legwork on this and worked with legal counsel. Um, and I'm just the pretty face that's putting that tip, putting it out there tonight.
It's a team effort.
It's a team effort. Thank you. Uh, so we have, this is really around um driving, you know, employees that drive district vehicles or drive on behalf of the district. Um, and so the goal of this po- policy is to ensure that district owned vehicles that are operated by drivers who are employees of the district have an acceptable driving record, that there's some administrative regulations in place, um, which is really where the meat of any board policy is. It's in the regulations. And so there's a whole section in regulation three, five, four, four point two, which is definitions. Um, there's the qualifications that a driver needs to have um in terms of it, the driver's record with the DMV in order to be able to operate a district vehicle um in terms of the whole point system. Um, there's kind of what to do when there's an accident. What is the red, you know, what is the action that a driver would take if they are in an accident? Um, and then sort of rules of operation. This applies to anybody who's driving, say, a maintenance vehicle or um is driving a golf cart on the high school campus, right? This is this is applicable to all of those. Um, and so um it uh, let's see, the other highlights, um. That's pretty much the meat of it. Um, and I think that uh, one of the biggest changes is that if you are a driver of a district vehicle, that uh you would be working with the human resources department um each year to uh provide what is called the exhibit because we have a a policy, a regulation and an exhibit. And the exhibit is the employee vehicle use and driving records policy annual acknowledgement. So it's an acknowledgement of our employees that annually there will be a DMV poll of driving records in order to ensure that our drivers are eligible and qualified to be able to drive district vehicles. So it's it's a policy that needs to be in place, best practice, and so we're bringing it forth tonight for the first reading.
Yep. So excited to bring this forward. Sounds like a good safety step forward. So uh, thank you for for bringing this to our our team here. Okay, and with that, I think um we're going to close the session.